Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Milak?
Yes. Is anyone here wishing to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, we can close public comment and go into executive session. Time is now five past four.
Perfect.
What do you want to carry?
What?
Okay.
My grandmother did.
Did he want a house or work at her house?
She wanted to distribute.
And on the seventh day, I have the same policy. Seven and a half years. Oh, yeah, it comes up. At least once in life. Doesn't need to. Just two. But he lives, uh, he lives in Georgetown. And one opportunity for inspiration. He was in Michigan. Just a little higher. Self-patricies, cats. That have moves in his brain.
Everybody moves.
It's, uh, how does this feel?
She's playing really good. Younger. She's acting just getting someone. Tell them that's a good person.
They see. I guess the art of the mouse. Just stop, she stopped right there. She's walking.
That's a shame.
You're married fifty-five years.
Maybe a lot. There's something very good. Comes up with crazy kids. She remembers everybody. However, once he come, I will see him.
Triggered and she would walk in and then leave. She was twenty. Twenty miles. Top of your head.
I had a spell where I got allergic to the medication. Delicious taste. But I think I went through five or six days. Hi, Rod.
Hi, Rod.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes I feel like all of us. Give me just some more. I'll come driving my machine. Dad. Take care of your girls. Son.
They're scared.
It's amazing when the police dominate.
There's a county. Are you on safe today?
I don't know.
Or just hold your public comments because they're here for crowd control.
Yeah, no comment. So, what? What? Yeah, what are you doing back there?
He's hiding in the chair seats.
Yes, and then we can go down now.
Hey, Jay, how you doing?
She was here.
Oh, yeah. Um.
Do you have a newspaper in the library?
Yeah.
Like God, I think it's from my style. We'll get one. Not a microchip.
The purple button.
We'll get one. Okay, so the next thing we have. We can sit there, buddies, for a second. I was there. Actually, cool. Ah, they choke this guy. Sheer shock. Choking tires on your car. On your car.
I don't know.
Please make them so we can show them.
Yeah.
Uh, this one is right out of all the other places. To represent their being more peaceful. Here we are, all of them they keep that out. No more stay.
Now's the time to wreck all of it, right?
Yeah, we still got some place to go there somewhere. Yeah, don't worry. Yeah. No.
Can you do your homework?
Yeah. She called.
Right, it's counterproductive.
Yeah.
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 Right. Yeah.
Those are good. Yes, I have to probably check the measure.
She said, no, I'm not happy.
This, uh, in love with it. I think it's something crazy now. It's like all, you know, the fox. So that of the discipline. I'm saying, yes. Work with you. No, straight ahead. Yeah.
Do you say?
All right, good evening, everyone. We have a special meeting of the City Council of the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Wednesday, September third, 2025. The time is now four P M. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor Moloch, we should, uh, I apologize. We should close out the special meeting first and then we'll, we'll call this regular one to order. You can skip the main standing if you'd like.
Do I have a motion to, uh, close the executive session that we just came out of?
I'll make that motion.
A little bit ago.
In a second.
All right, I have a, I have a motion in a second and we're not taking any action from that, um, closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can call the regular meeting.
Okay, now we can, now we can say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and Press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council posted on the
posted on the city website and City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDavid?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullock?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
CFO Haney?
Here.
Any additions or deletions tonight, Mayor?
Any, any additions or deletions, Council? No?
Moving on to Employee of the Month.
Okay. City Manager, if you would take it away?
Thank you. I'm going to ask Patrolman Martinez to come on up. Yeah, you get to stand up here while we talk about you. And Chief, I'm going to let you come on up here too at the same time.
Hi, Danny.
So Patrolman Daniel Martinez, the Cape May Police Department, was nominated by his Fellow in Police for his dedication as a full-time police officer. Patrolman Martinez here is very diligent at enforcing both the traffic and criminal statutes on all of Cape May Island. And Patrolman Martinez is very driven and proactive, always has a good positive attitude, friendly demeanor, and energizes the room with his laughter. I thought we'd get a little laughter out of him. Patrolman Martinez, he's been with the Police Department since 2019. He was briefly with a lower township in West Wildwood, but he liked it here just a little bit better. So we are glad that he's staying with us. He's married and formerly lived in West Cape May. Now he's just residing over the bridge in Lower Township, so.
If he stayed over the side of the bridge, I see.
Oh, you are on this side of the bridge? Okay, okay. So, thank you. Congratulations. And I got, I have a, I have a late summer cold, so I'm just going to give you a little fist bump. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job.
Go back to your street work.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you. Okay. Onto updates and old business. City Manager?
Thank you. The first update I'd like to give is regarding the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Hazard Mitigation Plan is a plan that is developed through the county OEM. And our OEM team here works with all of our city departments to come to kind of create the Hazard Mitigation Plan. So Hazard Mitigation Plan looks at, reviews all the hazards that could affect Cape May City, and then what actions we may want to take to mitigate those actions. And a lot of those mitigation actions have to be in this plan if we want to receive federal funding for that. So the same reason why we're getting federal FEMA funding for this extension of the seawall, that was in part because it was in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. If it was not in the Hazard Mitigation Plan, we wouldn't have received that funding. So this is why it's very important to kind of go through this, look at our hazards, and identify them. We're at the, kind of towards the end of the planning process. So you've seen our appendix, because it's an appendix because we're part of the whole county. So it's the front two sections are really talking about the county, and then they have an appendix for each municipality within the county. And those are obviously municipality-specific. So this is really the opportunity. We're like in a 30-day review period where it's kind of in the final draft form. Once this 30-day period gets over, it will then get submitted up to NJ OEM. If they're acceptable with it, it then gets passed up to FEMA. And then if they're acceptable to it, then we come back to us to do a formal adoption of the plan. But this is really the opportunity if the public or council has any final recommended changes to kind of let us know now. But we want, just to make a part of the pub process, that's why we have it here on the agenda this evening. The next item we have to discuss, the contractor's getting ready to restart back up on the promenade preservation program. In the spring, we, council authorized the purchase of the benches to replace the memorial benches on the promenade. Myself and Public Works and Civic Affairs and council has worked on fine-tuning the plan. We anticipate notifying every bench holder to go over the plan with them. If we don't get a mail back from them, we'll hunt them down through voice, email, smoke signals if we have to, maybe a little semaphore if they're a Navy person or Coast Guard. But the whole intent is to make sure that if anybody has a bench up there, that we go over with, with them the program on, you know, they can take their bench with them. They can, we have a process for them to participate and bring a new bench onto the promenade. And so we'll, we'll start sending these notices out to bench holders over the next two weeks, ask them to return the information. And then, you know, as we, as we continue this construction project, as we take the benches off of the promenade, we know what, what those bench owners want to do with their bench or not. And I think we have a, probably a solid plan that's really thought out. And, you know, the important thing is, you know, we understand that these benches mean a lot to the people that when they, you know, applied for a memorial bench, it was a memory of, of someone, a loved one for them, and we want to respect that. And we want to make sure that, you know, we, we make contact with them. So we're going to do everything we can to do that. But I just wanted to let you know that this, that process is going to start. I've already, you know, some people have already seen this on the agenda. They've already started reaching out to Casey about, hey, is it too early to send my application? And so, you know, I think that we'll be in good shape to make sure we make contact with all the bench, bench people. Rolling back to that, so the promenade preservation project contractor will start next week. You'll start seeing him setting up his, no parking signs. We'll probably go out at, on Friday for the following Monday along the different sections of Beach Avenue, starting from Madison down to Queen. That'll be the first area that they'll start working at. You'll also see they've started doing some layout on Illinois Avenue. So they will, contractor anticipates being out there next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, to start doing some work, their work on Illinois Avenue. If you've driven down Lafayette Street, the, the contractor's been working in there. They're putting up the fencing. They've got everything going. We have to get a little working out with the irrigation so that they can plant the sod on the baseball field. But it's, that project is coming along pretty well. So that's all I had for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. City Solicitor, any updates, roll business?
Just wanted to give council a brief update on the workforce housing ordinance that we had discussed, not adopted, but recommended sending through to the planning board. And anybody that followed the planning board meeting most recently would see that that was chewed up and comments were made, as these things do. And I think there was sort of a look back at Mr. Hurlis to work on some changes, but really I, I think that falls on me to amend the ordinance. So what I did in response to that meeting is looked at the comments that were made. They didn't vote on it yet, but looked at the record and what they were concerned with. And a couple of things came out of that with a revised ordinance draft, which were limiting the scope of that to not just the C1, but to specifically the, the blocks on the Washington Street Mall in the C1. So it's not the C1 as a whole, but it'd be more of an overlay for the Washington Street Mall itself. And calling out those specific blocks rather than just that zone. Reworking the definition by what, what we mean by workforce housing. This just as easily could have been called the anti-short-term rental ordinance or anti-Airbnb. We use workforce housing as a term of art, but you really have to look at the definition in the ordinance itself, and it really points to duration greater than 90 days, which could mean a whole list of things. It could mean somebody that lives there. It could mean its owner occupied. It could mean someone that doesn't own the building, but, and may be a teacher in Wildwood, but wants to live here and make Cape May their home. Those are the types of occupancies that this is targeted at, long-term versus short-term. That's what workforce housing means in this definition. So that's been updated, hopefully clarify that, and would encourage people that are curious about this to read the definition, not just look at the title, but read the definition of what it's targeted at. So also proposing some capacity limitations to avoid these sardine can-type scenarios where we're just packing people in and it's going to be a gazillion people in a small unit. No. So under this revised ordinance draft, there are some square footage calculations based on the International Property Maintenance Code, some standards that are used throughout the United States, throughout the world for, you know, what's a safe bedroom square footage for people to be living in, that type of thing. So you'll see some square footage references in there, confirming that conversions, proposing only workforce housing and not like a complete redo of the whole building, and we're going to change all these different uses. But hey, I have some vacant space up here, upstairs that I may want to convert to workforce housing. That may be the type of simple application that you, you should be exempt from site plan. You can pull a permit so long as you meet the specific requirements and provide sort of an efficient means to accomplish the goals in this ordinance. But of course, if you're doing something else and workforce housing is just a component of that bigger project, you still have to go to site plan. And then some confirmatory language regarding the concept of grandfathering and, you know, confirming that this is not some gift or handout from City Council if this were to be adopted, and we don't just rip people's mercantile licenses for short-term rentals that were lawfully existing at the time of the zoning ordinance change. That's a constitutional principle that we could just leave out of this ordinance, but it would still apply because that's, that's the state of things. We can't just go back and turn back the clock on zoning. There are, there's case law on that. Now, they have to be lawfully existing at the time of adoption, but still, that's, that's, that was more of an FYI informational section so that, to avoid confusion about it. But of course, you know, that's, when you discuss these things, it's like, you know, Pandora's box is open and we have to sort of work through it, make sure everybody understands what's happening and what the goal of this is. So there's not really any change there except to clarify that that's not some optional thing. It, it was more just to point that out for people as they're evaluating how this is going to impact their properties. So those are, that's the outline of some of the changes that were, a revised ordinance was drafted. I sent that through to Mr. Hurlis. That's going to be re-reviewed by the planning board, hopefully address some of their comments and concerns. And then we'll see what the outcome of that discussion is. And when we think that we're ready for something to come back with all those comments, we can, we'll bring it back to the council table. But I just wanted to let everybody know, let the public know, let council know what's going on with that project and where it sits. It sits with the planning board right now, and I'll keep you posted.
Mr. Gillen Schwartz, you might have just touched on it, but it went over my head a little bit. If an applicant applies for, you know, if a person makes an application for something they've applied before and was denied, would this be treated as a new application and not like de novo?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Say, you know, last year I applied to have an apartment above a building I owned on the mall, and I got denied. Could I reapply that as a new application?
If, if somebody applied for an apartment above commercial use under the previous ordinance?
Right.
And they're in a Washington Street Mall, and then this is adopted and they say, hey, you know what? I want to make an application for workforce housing. They may not even have to go to the board for that under here if they can strictly meet the standards that are in, in this new definition. So the, the short answer is yes, that would be a new application. And oh, by the way, you might not even have to go to the board if that's all you're doing and you can meet the requirements in here. So as a, the zoning, it would, it could pass at the zoning officer phase, provided that you meet the conditions in here. And there are, you know, some, like I said, square footage, and, and the location of it would have to be vetted by the zoning officer. If it doesn't meet those, they could just go to the board like anybody else too for variance from those conditions. But the goal here is to provide some, some parameters that are, promote the use, that allow for a safe use too, not overcrowding those spaces, but giving people an efficient means to accomplish the goals of this, which is to get some long-term housing in those areas. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Anything else?
That's it.
City Council, any updates or old business? Okay. Onto our CFO, review of interest-bearing accounts and bond sale summary.
Yes. So I'm going to touch on a couple of different topics, so feel free to stop me at any point with questions or comments, and I'll just wait for Aaron to pull up our report. Okay. So the first item for council's review is a report on all of our interest-bearing accounts, showing all funds currently on deposit. All of our funds are currently held with Sturdy Bank as of July 31st of this year. We have a total of $33 million on deposit and have earned interest of $670,000. This is across 17 accounts that we have with Sturdy. I've also included the same information for 2024 and 2023 for comparison. You can see that year-to-date interest is up compared to 2023, but down compared to 2024. We had a major rate renegotiation in early 2023 and then have seen some minor fluctuations here and there since then. 2024 total interest came to around 1.1 million by the end of the year. While we are year-to-date below 2024, we do have a large influx of cash coming in because of a recent bond sale. So that should bump us up close to that year total 2024 number by the end of 2025. That brings me to my next topic, which is the bond sale. So last week, on Wednesday, the city held a bond sale to permanently finance $20 million of previously authorized debt. The bonds were issued for 15 years. I reiterate, 15 years, not 40 years. We received a premium of around $900,000 coming from the bond sale, which was used to resize the outstanding debt, thus reducing our debt service payments each year. And we issued at an interest rate of 3.53%. So annual debt service related to this issuance will be about 1.7 to 1.8 million dollars per year through the term of the bond, 2040. We also held a note sale to roll a $7 million water sewer note that was issued last year for another year, and that rate came in at 2.56%. At the time of the sale, our bond counsel and our municipal advisors noted that this was a very successful sale and that our bond rating of AA and our note rating of SP1+ helped us to secure competitive interest rates. Specifically, the rate on our note of 2.56 was highlighted as one of the few times that they've seen a rate below 2.6 in recent years. So they were impressed with that. And then my final topic, which is NJARM. So on the consent agenda tonight, we have Resolution 26609-2025 to approve the investment of the bond sale proceeds into the New Jersey Asset and Rebate Management Program, or NJARM. Just as a refresher, the NJARM is an investment trust specifically designed for municipalities and school districts to invest surplus funds and bond proceeds. All of the funds are invested in a portfolio of short-term U.S. Treasuries and federal agency notes and are available for same-day deposits and withdrawals, similar to a checking account like the rest of our funds. NJARM also tracks arbitrage on bond interest, which will be helpful for us. And the current interest rate offered by NJARM is 4.21%, which is stronger than we are currently earning on the rest of our deposited funds. So if the resolution were approved and the investment were to go through, it should net us about $50,000 in additional interest just over the remaining four months of the year. And then just have a quote to read from the NJARM website. "The goals of the NJARM program are safety of principal and liquidity of the local government funds entrusted to it, as well as earning a competitive yield. The joint account portfolio is rated AAA by S&amp;P, which is the highest rating available." So in summary, we have 33 million in the bank. Our year-to-date interest is a little lower than last year. With the bond sale, we should meet last year, and if we invested in NJARM, we should exceed last year's interest amount.
Great work.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No problem. Any questions?
Any questions, Council? No? Nice work, Kevin.
Perfect.
That's great news.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we can move on to ordinances for second reading and adoption.
Yes, we have 574-2025, an ordinance amending zoning code to confirm the intent and purpose of pool setback requirements, and there is a public hearing tonight, Mayor.
We have a public hearing on ordinance 574.
We have a public hearing on ordinance 574. Is anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 574? Sir, please.
Please just state your name and address for the record, sir. Thank you.
Hunter Cochran, 1429 New Jersey Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening.
My concern about this ordinance is I would also like the council to consider, what do you think about also perhaps including a noise curfew time period that's earlier than the 10:00 PM citywide curfew associated with pools? It would be nice, I think, if we could memorialize such a thing because they're so intrusive on the neighbors in terms of the noise. The pools tend to be places where especially young children congregate and all the sounds on a pool and its surrounding surfaces tend to reflect all the noise. Does the board, has the board considered that in any other way before or thought about it?
I think the solicitor would probably give us the best answer to that.
So, sorry, Chris.
That's all right. That's why I'm here. So, it's important to note that, I think you understand this, Mr. Cochran, but the, this ordinance is not changing any of the bulk requirements or any of the use requirements. I know you know that. So, that's, this is really more of a bolstering, why do we have pool requirements at all? And we have, because there was confusion about, like, why do we have a 10-foot requirement? Is that to fit a fire ladder? No, it's not just that. It's that and it's also, we like to have space between structures and we like that in and of itself. We want light air and open space. That's one of the purposes of the municipal land use law. But what you're pointing to, the noise, and actually, council has taken some action in the interim to adjust the pool requirements, to add things like green space requirements and landscaping. You know, let's get some trees to provide at least a visual buffer, if not a sound buffer. But the sound thing is probably more appropriate for, this is a zoning ordinance, the sound is more of a police regulation and that would be more of a, you know, adjusting the noise ordinance. But I wouldn't necessarily tie it to this, this ordinance, which is more of a policy thing.
Thank you. I'm seizing the opportunity because it's a change in the pool ordinance to bring up some subjects that I think are pertinent. I think I mentioned briefly before, there's not a simple vehicle to sort of bring these topics up and have discussion about it. And I'm open to doing it in the appropriate form. So, I'm just using this public forum as a means to bring up the subject.
Sure. I would agree with the solicitor that we probably should vote on this as is. And I think what you're talking about would probably be an update to the noise ordinance. Would you agree with that?
Yeah, and it's not inappropriate to bring it up now. It's just, it's just not, you can walk and chew gum on that issue. That's more of a noise ordinance issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, and look, I was extremely involved the first time we changed the zoning for pools. Originally, they weren't even counted in lot coverage. But that had never been an issue for years because we didn't have all this pressure for these rental properties. And as we all know, if you put a pool in, all of a sudden, your weekly rate goes up significantly. So, there's a lot of pressure on that, on building of pools. So, the good news is the ordinance was revised to include it in lot coverage. It's better than it was. There's still a lot of pressure to build pools and I think it's something that...
So, I would, I would view this in the context of this amendment, even though it's sort of like fluff policy, it really isn't when you get to the zoning board level and it's really designed to give the board more breaks and more reins on these types of applications when they come in. Because we've had applications where people come in and say, well, I may need a variance, but you can fit a fire truck back here or you can, the fireman can get back here. So, what's the problem? And the board's sort of scratching their heads like, well, I guess that's, that's a point. But this, this is saying, so what? We have other reasons for requiring side yard setbacks. So, it's really giving the zoning board something else to sink its teeth into in those pool applications and say, you know what, you may be able to get through there for a safety reason, but maybe there's a good reason to have more space even if we can get those personnel back there.
I agree that this ordinance will tighten, tighten it up and make it clear what can and can't be done by regulation. That's crystal clear. I agree with you. So, I'm in favor of that part of it. I just trying to make note of the general pressure on town to build more pools, which as a general statement are intrusive, especially amongst people like me who live here all summer long. You know, guess what? It got really great yesterday all of a sudden. Every year, right? So, anyway, thank you very much.
Understood. I think it's something that we as a council will discuss and consider. I just want to say, I think one of the difficulties in enforcement is going to be, were they in the pool or were they in the yard? Or, you know, I mean, I think that's going to be a tough...
Well, it's just like the noise ordinance. Unfortunately, the only solution to the noise ordinance, I got to call the police and say, there's noise at XYZ.
Right.
Now, they do come out and deal with it. But, you know, I don't like to be the policeman, frankly. It's a pain in the neck to have to be that person.
Right. But I agree with your concern. I mean, I think we have heard it before from many people who are around a pool. So, I think it's something we'll consider and definitely discuss.
Which that would almost be impossible to do by the police, to drive down the street to know. So, that would always fall to, a neighbor would have to call about that. You mean, so that would, you know, there'd be, it'd be virtually impossible for code enforcement or police to be out on the street to know, is somebody in the pool?
Paul, you sound like you've been the one yelling at people.
Right.
Yes.
Well, I'm not even, I wasn't even advocating people out of the pool by nine. I want a noise, a more stringent noise around a house that has a pool than the regular noise ordinance.
Understood.
And that's, I think, really what the subject is or should be because I think that's what happens. And I'm not trying to be unreasonable about it.
Yep.
You know, a lot of time, I'm in bed by 10. Not all the time, but, so, you know, but I, so I get up and I make the phone call when it happens. Now, there's only a couple of neighbors where it's particularly bad, but they tend to be repeated offenders because they're rental units. And these people are in for their big week of fun.
And a lot of the things like blasting music after a certain hour are already covered by the ordinance. So, the type of, you may, you may find that some of the maybe ills of a pool after a certain hour might be already covered, you know, even if it's not specifically saying, you know, noise from a pool. It's like noise from people yelling or playing music too loud. That stuff is, is addressed in the code.
I agree. I think the 10 o'clock ordinance, noise ordinance currently addresses the pool noise. I think you could make a complaint about the pool because of the noise ordinance as it exists. I was advocating trying to maybe look at possibly making it early. Yes.
Yeah. We'll discuss it.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on ordinance 574? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
We have 575-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 310 of the Code of the City of Cape May concerning licensing and permits to update fees and costs associated with special events and use of public property, again with a public hearing.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on 575, ordinance 575? Seeing none, we'll close public comment on ordinance 575. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Moving on to the public portion on the resolutions only, Mayor.
Is anyone here wishing to speak on resolutions this evening? Jules?
Good evening. Jules Rouse, 1010 New York Avenue. I was hoping that Kevin would have stayed, but I'd like a little clarification, make sure I'm understanding this correctly. With the 33 million that we are using in sweep accounts with Sturdy and with this new, the 20 million that's going to be on deposit at the state, we're looking at, am I correct, about 1.1 interest a year or is it higher than that?
I think basically, if we move the money into NJARM, we should be making, we'll make more than what we made last year in interest. That's the projection.
And that money, as I understand it from the state, is available immediately. It's not something that requires, you know, 30-day notice.
Correct, yeah.
It's available funds, just like...
Yes, yeah, it's not like a CD where it has a maturity date. It's just like, the money is in sturdy savings, Ocean First Bank or any other bank.
I think he used the term, it's like a checking account.
Yep.
I'm sorry, again.
He used the term, it's like a checking account.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it's liquid.
Well, you know, there's a benefit of 0.68% difference in the, in the rate. So, obviously, there's a significant benefit. And I think that's, I think that's great management. However, there's a flip side to this. And that is, the city is borrowing $20 million and that's going to be paid back over, now I understand, 15 years. And that payment program is a budget item which the taxpayers are going to have to pay.
But if you recall, this past year, we had a $20 million bond drop off. So, the, that 1.1 or, I forget what the payment was for the year, that we paid, that's in this year's budget, it's going to be in next year's budget. It's the same, it's like, it's like keeping the same car payment year after year. You know, it's like, we sold, we finished paying off our permanent bond financing with the bond that matured and then we just rolled into one so that there is no impact, immediate impact to our budget because it's already within our budget.
The interesting item is here we're getting $20 million and we're earning interest on it. And the flip side is, we borrowed $20 million and we're now going to have to pay interest and principal. We have to pay it back. And that's being paid back by the taxpayer. If you think in terms of pots of money, we're getting a pot full of money with, which is interest that enables the city to go and spend whatever that money that pot generates. On the other hand, we've got a 20 million dollar debt that we need to service and that's being paid for by the taxpayer. So, there's an equity here. And the inequity is that the taxpayer has to pay for the debt of the 20 million and the administration is getting a revenue source that was not anticipated and they can, they have, they have a pot full of money now that's coming from the earned interest, which frankly is great. But understand, it isn't free. The taxpayer is being burdened with paying off the $20 million. I believe there should be some kind of a formula whereby the interest that is earned on both the sweep account and the state fund money is used to repay or be applied in some form to the repayment of the $20 million debt. Am I making myself clear?
Yes, that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on resolutions this evening?
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I noticed that we're going out to bid for state contracts for a lot of items there, that ones in excess and ones that are below the threshold. I was just surprised that we're doing a lot of these state contracts and not staying local. I know we used to do, for one item, like we used to get our oil locally and now we're going to be going through some company, I think, in North Jersey. And I just wanted to make sure that the, this council realizes that we keep a lot of local businesses in business and that our business should be to the locals, especially when they're, a lot of them are like the same price. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Do I have, we'll close public comment on resolutions. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Can, Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be possible, if we could pull Resolution 268?
Please, yep. Anything else, council? Pull anything else? No? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the consent agenda, council? I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right. Going back to 268-09-2025, this is a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus city property no longer needed for public use through Fireline Equipment LLC.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council?
Yeah, I pulled this off the agenda and I think we're all in receipt of a possible minimum bid for both of these vehicles. And that's the only change on this, on this resolution. So, on the 1995 Pierce Pumper, the minimum bid will be $35,000. And on the 2004 E1 Tower, the minimum bid will be $150,000. That's just to generate, I've seen other things bid and awarded where there was only one bid quite below what a possible minimum value of this. So...
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Makes sense to me.
Everybody's okay with that.
Good call.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Okay, do I, I'm sorry, we had a motion, correct, on 260?
We would need a motion to amend to add the minimum bids that the councilmember Baldwin just mentioned.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember...
This is on the amendment, sorry.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. Do I have a motion on the amended resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Okay.
New business? New business, city solicitor?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
City manager?
I had one thing that really should have been discussed under update, but I had forgot to mention it. So, at the last meeting, when I was talking about mercantile fees and the unlicensed short-term rentals, I misspoke when I gave my summary table. We had about a total close to just under 1,900 in short-term rentals in total. There were about 90 that were unlicensed that had been identified. So, I kind of transposed when I looked at my notes. And, and since then, I think the clerk's office and code enforcement has whittled that number down probably by half even, you know, through, just in the coding between our licensing program and the rentalscape. So, we're probably under 40 as it stands now that would be unlicensed. I just wanted to make that clarification. I know there was an article in the newspaper and, you know, it jumped a lot of heads and turned a lot of people around, but I just wanted to clarify that, that it wasn't 900 that were unlicensed in that respect.
And we're still tweaking the data too. So, that, that number might fluctuate a bit. We'll, we'll get it nailed down the more we use it.
But I, but I do, I do think that we had more new short-term rentals apply because they, of the public outreach that we did do early on in the season, which I think that was shown in the, the number of the fees collected was up over $100,000 this year compared to last year. So, that was part of that.
That's great. Okay, city clerk?
Nothing tonight, council. Thank you.
Councilmembers, councilmember Baldwin?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Among the items that we addressed on the agenda tonight was Jerry Hathaway was appointed to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So, I want to welcome him to that committee. And I also want to acknowledge, you know, several members who recently left that committee, Jeff Fissier, Terry Diubaldi, and Hillary Pritchard, who all served on the committee for a long period of time. And I know the city is grateful for all the work that they did on the, on the committee.
Thank you.
I also want to mention, Mayor, at our last meeting, you mentioned the bike stickers with the QR codes, which, which we have and are going to be distributing them. And for those that are here in attendance tonight, I put a few of them by the, by the door where, where the agenda is. So, if you want to pick it up and take a look at it, the QR code, for those who may recall from the last meeting, you access that and it brings, it'll bring anybody who accesses that QR code to the Bike and Safety Information page as well as the City Bike Map. So, for those that are here tonight, as I said, I put a few by the door. Please feel free to take them. You can place them on your bicycle. And if you need an additional sticker or stickers, please see me before you leave tonight. Thank you. sticker or stickers, please see me before you leave tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Nothing this evening, mayor.
Councilman Meyer?
I don't have anything either.
I just want to quickly say thank you to all of our city staff, but also, of course, to everybody in the service industry getting through this Labor Day. We all know that, you know, Cape May's economy is really built on the backs of a lot of workers in the service and hospitality industry. And especially at the end of the year, I know it can get a little bit more difficult. So I just want to thank everyone for, you know, always making Cape May a welcoming place for people to choose to bring their family. We all know how expensive Cape May, but many other towns have gotten. And so it becomes a little more difficult for families. So to make people feel welcome and give them that special time with family is something that we all remember growing up here, vacationing in Cape May. So I just want to say thank you. And just a quick pre-Labor Day story, which I just thought was so Cape May, was I attended the kids' play that was put on by the Cape May Cares Group at Cape May Stage. And I want to thank both of those, all those volunteers. The play was put on by Mrs. Hathaway, which I just thought, you know, where else in America are young children getting an original script and play by Mrs. Hathaway? So it was really cool. All the kids had such a wonderful time. And all the parents were so excited to be in the real playhouse, on the real stage. And it was really lovely. So I just thank you to all the volunteers that are involved with that. With that, I'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any and all matters, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I guess my question might be to the city manager. It has to do with, I had Oprah, and I haven't received it yet, asking for the DEP approval for the lots, or for the approval for where the police station is going to go. And it wasn't for the DEP approval related to the land swap. And the reason why I was asking for that is the deeds actually, for those places where the police station is going to go, have deed restrictions, that if it's not going to be a parking lot or a park, that you need DEP approval. So I was just wondering if we, since the bids have went out and they're going to be opened up, if we have received that DEP approval for that change of use for those lots?
My understanding is, the land diversion cleared any of those restrictions that may have been on those properties. But there was no other DEP permit, whether it's CAFRA or any of the other DEP permits, regulatory permits from the DEP that'd be required?
I think just because you got the land swap, that doesn't say that you can build something on it. They're a different entity for the approval.
Stacy, is it possible that, were you reviewing, like, the documents that were transmitted through JCPN?
These are 2019, 2022 documents that have deed restrictions on them.
Yeah, because the deed notice and access agreement does reference limitations. But we've been working with JCPN this entire time, and they're fully aware and have put in writing the concept of the police station being, you know, an alternative use. So there is certainly some use limitations out there, but the city has been navigating that process in the various agencies for over four years at this point.
So you're saying that the DEP doesn't need approval for you to build a police station?
I'm saying that we've, to the extent their approval was required, we've been working with them this entire time, through the permitting process and green acres. And I can't count how many NJDP employees we've had to deal with through that.
I'm just saying that a land swap is different from building. You can swap land, but it doesn't give you the right to build on the land.
But the land swap actually diverted the encumbrance on the property. That's what the land diversion, it wasn't a land swap. You were swapping the encumbrance on the land.
In addition, we have to go through SHIP-O.
We did.
For, to get approval for that. So both the land swap and the development of the police station itself have run through those two channels.
Okay. So then, I guess, just to make clear then, I won't be receiving an approval letter from the DEP saying that you can build on it because
There wasn't one.
There wasn't one.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please.
Hunter Cochran, 1429 New Jersey Avenue. I just want to give you kudos, the CFO, or, I'm sorry, what's his title officially?
CFO.
Thank you. For this new NJARM account, which clearly is a superior instrument for storing our funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, and mayor, I'm here because I have heard that
Ma'am, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Laura Callen in Cape May, New Jersey. You were looking for
I love it.
The coin.
I know exactly what you're holding. That's great.
First, and I would like you to see this spot with a landmark file, because that's kind of neat. And then
We literally brought this up today, by the way. I said, I'm trying to find this coin.
Let's see. This coin, I received two coins. First, when I was elected city council as the first woman. And that was a silver one from Anne the Duke Shell Fund.
That's so cool.
She was thrilled. The second one was from a state legislature, who has passed away since then. This is the bronze coin that I'll share with you. I did not bring the silver one with me. You can look at it. I want it back. Take a picture.
So cool, so cool.
But there were originally 200 silver coins. And there was numerous amounts of the bronze coins. The design on it has a landmark on one side, and then on the other side, it has the New Jersey seal. The dates, if you're going to create a coin, I think it's a great idea. It was to honor us, and it was Frank Gavry that accepted it. And he accepted it from the state for us being the only national historic landmark district encompassing the whole municipality in the state of New Jersey. And back in 1976, this was all new.
Yeah.
So we had to accept it, and look where it has gotten us.
So cool.
All right? So if there's any way you'd like me to help to move it forward, okay, let me, I think it's very important for us to create a commemorative coin, and then possibly take the monies that we get from it, give some to the HPC, because there's numerous things that the HPC
That's a great idea.
Has to still finish, to protect our landmark designation. All right?
I love that idea.
All right.
For the folks who don't know, we're coming up on the 50th anniversary.
May 11th.
Yep, so cool.
2026.
So we got to start printing some coins.
Okay. The next thing I have a question on is similar to what Stacy had said. I'm concerned about the contaminants that are possibly on the other lots over there on St. John. I was on city council in 1999, when we got the first results of what was over there. Those numbers were horrific. And everybody has consistently worked, you know, to eliminate and go through the right process. But now that you're going to put our police station on it, I also did an Oprah. And the DEP said that there is no test results for lots, wait a minute, for lots, I've got the proof, for lots 44, 45, 46, and 47. There is test results for 43, which we have to do remediation for. So the question I have is, where are those results? If there is soil samples and the soil borings that have to be done in order to put our police station on it, the contaminants that are there are cancerous. And we don't want our finest police department to end up exposed to it. All right? So if you've done them, and it just hasn't, we know how it is with the DEP, sometimes they get it, sometimes it's slow. So I would just like to see that those lots are clear of any of the contaminants.
Sure.
All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
I think the city manager is going to give you his contact.
Ma'am.
Laura?
So, just to bring that up, and I've reviewed the latest SOAR reports from JCPN. And they have tested all along the lots on St. John's. And they're pretty good. I do agree, those initial reports were very troublesome. Are there still some contamination, I'll say within the bathtub area and in the wetland area beyond the bathtub? Yes. But underneath of where the police station building is going to be, is clean, I mean, as clean as clean can be in that area. There are some contamination that's 20, 30 feet below grade. I think our deepest excavation for the elevator pit is four feet below grade. So, you know, we'll not be excavating anything that's near any potential contamination. They've also tested for vapor. They've never had a positive result of vapors coming up through the ground to the surface, you know, so that if there is some contamination, that contamination that may be 30, 40 feet below, the vapors from that rising up and causing a problem. We took one extra step during the design of the police station to put a vapor barrier and recovery system beneath the concrete slab of that, so that if we ever detected vapors, we already have a system to, you know, collect it and remediate it, so that it does not enter the police station building. But I'd be happy to show you the results of that test. So reach out to me, and I'll make an appointment for you, and we'll look at it.
Thank you.
And I have met with, I took the test results, and I did meet with command staff at the police department, just to kind of go over it with them. They have that data, so that they could relay that to their staff and let them know that they're moving into a safe area.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Couple things, I'll expound upon that as well, just to confer with the manager there, or agree with. My staff did have concerns when we initially started this process. We reached out to the manager, and he came in and showed us all the geek-stick stuff. Because it was all Greek to me at one point, respectfully. He understood it. But then he broke it down for our command staff, so that we could relay it to the staff. And I do appreciate Stacy's comments and concerns, and as well as Laura, because it's a concern for all of us. But what I was shown, what I was given, the information up to date, the test pits, where everything laid, we were comfortable with that explanation. And, you know, that's just the only thing the staff asked me to do, was make sure that was done. And it was done. I think when you see it, Laura, you're going to, you'll probably understand it more than I do, because I'm the cop, you're the, yeah. But as far as that's concerned. So we were brought to that light, that was the concern. And the manager quickly explained it to us on the big screen, showed us, it was long, but it was a lot of information thrown at us at one point. So we do appreciate that. And, you know, we've spoke about the vapor barriers in the new building. And, you know, we just hope that everything we're doing will prevent any cancerous contaminants that come into the building. What I will also say is, we are opening bids here shortly, and we're very hopeful for a positive return from the bidders. And hopefully, all the work that this council has done, and the team that was tasked to do this, will show light. And, you know, we're hoping for a good early October-ish groundbreaking at some point, hopefully, if that works. And the last thing on the coin, Laura, we, actually, the police department entered into that coin business a few years ago. And we have a coin company for you to follow and contact. They'll take
That's great.
You know, they'll take what your design thoughts, if you want to use them.
That's perfect.
We already have them in Ebbins, so you could just go ahead and use them. But our coin, if you, you know, if you ever get a hold of one, I'll pass one around, as it's explained. But the way we did it for ours, at the time, we had just lost Norman in Ferrera, so the lifeguard. So we dedicated our coin to him and his family. On the back of our coin is depicted with the lighthouse, which isn't really Cape May proper, but it's Cape May, you know, when people think of it, the Cape May Lighthouse. We have our lifeguard boat on there with Norman's initials on it, that his parents do have one of these coins each, NV3, because he was the third. And it also has the two brick entrance points to Cape May Point and West Cape May, because we are their police department. And I was very proud of this coin. And on the flip side, it's just our challenge coin, or our badge on there. So you can make it bigger, make it smaller. But I think what Laura has passed around and showed you would definitely be fitting for that company, or another company to do it for you. Somewhat expensive, but I think worth the money and the venture. But to put someone a part of that process
Very cool.
Takes a little while. So, while I have to say, we had a busy summer with regards to people and traffic. And I think a lot of questions, the questions obviously raised to me is, why is the backup going in and out of town at 4:00 in the afternoon a problem? I don't know how many times the deputy city manager called me, said, "Chief, what's the problem? What's going on the other side of the bridge? What's going on?" I honestly, I think I figured it out over the weekend, Monday. Monday was my proving point. It's the day trippers. Honestly, I think that's where we are. And I don't know how to fix that. It's good and bad for traffic-wise, but it's literally, they come in, in the morning, they beach, they eat, and then they're going. And I just need them to stagger their time so the business people that work here can leave at 4:00 and go home, or 3:30 and go home. And it takes you 40 minutes to get to lower town, sometimes. You can try to sneak around, and they now know the cutarounds. They know the Bay Shore Road runaround. I'm following cars down Bass Lane, I'm like, New York, Maryland, I'm like, wow.
Google Maps.
You got my sneak spot. So it's hard. And I
Ways.
Yeah, ways. And I apologize for that. But like I said, the men and women of both the fire department, the police department, Public Works, we hustled this summer. We appreciate the acknowledgement from you and council. And, you know, I did an interview this morning with Jack Bright, and he asked me a lot of questions, which you'll read in Exeter next week. And, you know, what's the biggest thing? What's the problem? And, you know, I apologize for some of the things I said in it, but it was more entitlement, you know? Respectfully, and this is a little thing, but even just the walkers in town going against the hand, the red hand, it says, "Stop." It causes that backup, because now you're stuck at the light, because they're walking across, and you're trying to figure out, okay, do I sneak ahead and try to go and almost hit these people? It's just, everybody's rushing to get somewhere, to the beach, to the eateries, wherever they're going. And, you know, it's, I don't know. We also tackled the dogs in the mall and the boardwalk promenade. We're trying to thwart that. We had several, Roz, I think you brought it up maybe at one point, just about the dogs on the promenade and the bikes, etc. But we're working at that. We've tasked our Class Ones and Twos to be out there from 8:00 to 12:00 in the morning, and just be out there kicking them off, you know, kicking them, you know, there. So I was a little understaffed this year. It's not anyone's fault in this room. It's my fault. The manager and I have a plan for next year, moving in, to, you know, if I'm short come May, start hiring, or get aggressive hiring point to get back up to 15, and spread the guys out, the men and women out, to get around town. Because I think that's where my deficit was with regards to that. I'll take it. I'll fall on the sword of, people say, "I didn't see any Class Twos here or there, there's so many dogs." But we were spread a little bit thin, respectfully. But we'll do our best to bring those numbers up. It's hard for retention to get new hires. Everyone knows that everywhere. It's not just the Cape May city people trying to get hired here. So we'll work with that and go forward. So any questions, anything we can do, we'll continue to do better and just go from there. Yes, sir?
I have some thoughts regarding entryway and local area, which is where
Yep, yeah.
Thank you.
Hunter Cochran, 1429 New Jersey Avenue. If you eliminated left turns coming into town, and left turns leaving town, and got rid of the crosswalks, the crosswalks are a factor, and people either coming from the canal side trying to make a left turn onto 109 going north.
Right.
Or people on the Marina side trying to make a left turn to go back down into town. All of those could be facilitated by using the U-turn that's under the bridge.
Yeah, and I do agree with you there with, you know, the local U-turn. I think a lot of people don't know about it.
I understand. But good, clean signage
Yeah.
Could address those issues, and as well as
I could speak with Lower Township Police Chief, who's, the new one's going to be coming in, but
But I don't know about the crosswalk thing. I don't know if you
Crosswalk, that's out of my purview. That's something I think
No, that's the bigger issue, I think.
County roads and engineering, but
Yeah, that, I mean, that road is Lower Township jurisdiction, and it's also the Department of Transportation. So both agencies outside of our jurisdiction, fortunately.
I'm just, I'm just giving you observations of what the bottlenecks are primarily caused by.
Yeah, definitely. And again, the popularity of this community, so they love coming here.
That isn't going down.
Kill it, they will come, Kevin Costner. Built it, they will come. Kevin Costner said that.
Thank you.
There you go, thanks.
Chief, thank, thank you. And please, again, thank you to your whole staff for a great summer. We all, all know it's not over, but, but thank you for all their hard work.
We used to get it back in September. It's, it's not that way anymore. They're still here. We love you all. Come, keep coming, but
Hopefully, hopefully some of your staff can get a little time to relax themselves, too.
They appreciate it. They hustle hard, they enjoy. We, we did have, I will say, we did have a very busy August till now, DWI-wise, 13, you know what I mean? So I compliment our squads on that. We had to build the car into the collars last night, you know? So we spoke about that this morning, quickly, the manager and yourself, we spoke about that, the possibility of putting some bollards there. Lorraine, Councilwoman Lorraine Baldwin, we spoke about that over the years. We actually asked for councils to go, for it to be done in certain places, myself, Chief Coulter, and Deputy Chief Eck actually laid out a couple of different locations where we feel they should be put in. It's rather, sooner rather than later, do it. So it's costly, but it's something, you know, that last night could have been a tragedy right there. I mean, the service guy that was working in collars was knocked off where he was in through the building.
Right.
You know, that's, you know how busy it is right there on any given
In case he's listening, I got his phone call. I'm in a council meeting.
There you go.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
All right. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening, everybody. Thank you.
It's over here.
Time is 6:03.